For the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please take your seats. All right, welcome everybody to the May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four business meeting for the village board. Myself and trustee Paleota and trustee Brain just got back from a few days up at Lake George. I know it was a, it was a tough service up there for the annual New York Conference of Mayors, an opportunity to kind of network with some of our colleagues. New York State has fifteen hundred municipalities. This is just for the mayors of the cities and the villages, which are about two-thirds of that, so just over, just over a thousand. Great opportunity every year to kind of learn new things, whether it's on the MRTA and how we handle cannabis, the cannabis industry, or how we look at EMS and regionalization, how we look at code enforcement across the state, how we look at policies, what are the different protocols and processes that different villages and cities handle for different, for different issues that come up. So it was a, it was a good week and I want to thank the deputy mayor and the trustee Carnwright for being back here and holding the fort down, along with our front office and our great department head. So thank you. All right, so without further ado, we've got a busy agenda tonight. The first thing I want to do is point out that Dave's here. The code enforcement officer is not going to be here tonight, but our assistant code enforcement officer, Mr. Moore, is here in his stead. Chief Dixon is feeling a little under the weather, so he will not be here, but Sergeant Ruger is here in his stead. And Superintendent Trainer is away with two of his deputies, Mr. Nye and Mr. Smith, at a conference upstate on, on water matters. So we're going to be a little light tonight in the department head department. So, you caught that Joe? That was a good one, right? All right, I, I get one every now and then. All right, so without further ado, I'm going to ask Sergeant Ruger to come up to make a presentation. It's always, in this business, there's plenty of opportunities where you have to discipline or reprimand somebody and it's, it's always a good thing when you get an opportunity to recognize somebody for doing something, going above and beyond, performing their duties in an honorary, honor, in a, in a exemplary fashion, and I think Sergeant Ruger is gonna, is gonna do that right now. I'm sorry Sergeant Ruger, I just got reminded by the village clerk that I have to open the meeting, so. So I'm going to make a motion to open the meeting. May I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right Sergeant, the floor is yours.
All right, so I'm going to keep some of the details a little brief. There is an active investigation that's going on in the town. But on March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, Officer Thompson, he responded to assist the town of Cornwall police in a physical fight in progress. While unseen, obviously all the cops were working, the gentleman was in the restroom. And Officer Thompson felt uneasy about the situation. And when he searched the needed area in the garbage bag, he located a loaded nine millimeter pistol with three high-capacity magazines. Each magazine in and of itself is a charge all alone, regardless of the pistol. The pistol obviously was readily capable of causing death, serious bodily injury. In police work, you learn a lot of things, academy laws, policies, procedures. A lot of training and experience goes to what we do. The one thing that I can't teach anybody, that nobody can, is that gut instinct, those feelings. Officer Thompson had those feelings, he trusted them, he did excellent police work, he kept people safe, and it's my honor to actually bestow this award upon him. So Officer Thompson?
Yes, sir.
Wear this on your uniform with pride.
No, no, go ahead, trust me, yes.
Yeah, that's the most dangerous place in Cornwall.
Sergeant Ruger, what is the, what is the thing for his uniform? What is that, that?
So this is the Exceptional Police Duty Award. This acknowledges that P.O. Robert Thompson has been recognized for his exceptional police duty in which he recovered a loaded pistol firearm during his patrol, preventing possible serious injury or death to others. So the Exceptional Police Duty Award is, is a high honor. I mean, it was good work and we just wanted to recognize it.
Well, congratulations. Well done.
Thank you.
Well done. Good leadership, thank you Sergeant. Thank you. Well done. Best way to start a meeting off. See, we did you early, so you don't have to stick around for the rest of the root canal, so. All right. What a great way to start a meeting off. So, without further ado, we have two public hearings tonight, but before that, we'll open up the floor for public comment. You'll have three minutes to speak if you wish to do so. There'll also be public comment at the end of the meeting. Does anybody from the public wish to address the village board? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public comment and I'm going to move to approve meeting minutes. So, in regards to meeting minutes, I'm going to ask the board to approve the minutes from April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, May second, two thousand and twenty-four, and the May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meetings. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the meeting minutes of those three meetings?
Abstentions on those meetings.
Yeah, the, the third meeting had some people.
Uh, you know what, you're right. So, you know what, let's do the first two, we had full attendance, right? April twenty-second and May second. May thirteenth, you were missing myself and trustee Paleota, so. Yeah, so let's move to, let's move to adopt the minutes from the April twenty-second and May second meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, for this meeting, Lori Beth and myself will recuse. So for the April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four work session, I'm going to make a resolution to adopt the meeting minutes. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, three ayes and two abstentions. Okay, moving on. We have a public hearing and the first one is being referred to as the Animal Control in quotation marks, local law. And, yeah.
I'm sorry to interrupt for a second. You did April twenty-second.
April twenty-second, May second, and May thirteenth.
Because May second, I have to abstain for that one because I was not here for the May, the May second, so.
You're right.
That's fine.
And that was a business me, that was, what was May second? Was that a special meeting?
It was a special meeting, yes.
Special meeting. You're right. Okay, so, so came to be an abstention on that one. So let them, let the record reflect that. All right, thank you Jimmy for that update. All right, so the next item is a resolution for the, for the village board to consider adopting a change to the local law, amending the village code, chapter sixty-nine, to eliminate breed-specific dog restrictions. In two thousand and nine, to put this in perspective, I think people recall, this is shortly after Michael Vick's dog fighting ring was busted, there was a bit of a, I don't want to say hysteria, but there was a bit of concern about particular breeds and the village of Cornwall and Hudson, like many municipalities, elected to adopt a law that had breed-specific regulations in it. Basically what it are, basically what it required was that anyone that owned a pitbull was required to put a dangerous dog sign on their house. And the sign said, quote, "Warning, pitbull on premises," close quote. In this, which is section sixty-nine dash five, under our dog code and restrictions, subsection C, persons or business entities harboring a pitbull must post on all gates and entrances to the property and post in other conspicuous places signs which specifically state as follows, as I read, quote, "Warning, pitbull on premises," close quote. Fail to comply with this subsection shall be a violation of this chapter. So hearing no, no, oh no, we haven't done that. We decided on the public comment on the other side, I'm sorry. So in regards to that, the board is looking to strike that one section. So the dog laws in the village about aggressive dogs, about dogs that, that bite people, or the dogs that harass people, or dogs that bark incessantly, none of this changes. The only thing that will be stricken will be that one section C. And the village is essentially moving in the direction of many other municipalities. You make laws for the current facts and environment in front of you, and when things change, there are many people in this village that currently have pitbulls, and I see them walking them every day, we adjust it. It's very difficult to do because the American Pitbull Terrier has many variations. They have the Staffordshire Terrier, the American Bull Terrier, the American Pitbull Terrier, there's a number of different variations. And even if you do doggy DNA, what if somebody has a pitbull that is forty-nine percent pit and something else, or fifty-one percent? Do you have to have people get DNA? It's just a difficult law to enforce. So the village board has discussed this at length during our work session and decided that we're going to strike that code, which really, in the fifteen years it's been on the books, in speaking with our police chief, has never been enforced. Judge?
Well, we'd have to make a motion to actually open the public hearing. I don't know if you did that.
I'll make a motion to open the pub.
Second.
Public hearing on amending the local law, chapter sixty-nine of the village code entitled Animal Control to Eliminate Breed-Specific Restriction for Dogs.
I was going to do that after.
Got a second.
I was going, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
I was going to do the preamble first and then open the.
Just trying, just trying to help. That, that just.
All right, so having said that, the purpose of a public hearing is to give the public an opportunity to speak either for or against this proposed amendment to the law.
I would just add one little dimension to it, that the only provision in the code as it stands for putting a, posting a sign specifically relates to this pitbull provision. If your poodle bites somebody five times, you are not required to put up a sign. So this was a law that was enacted to put up, to require people to put up a sign if they had a pitbull that said "dangerous dog." But that was the only requirement for a sign, so.
Yeah, yes. So having said that, is there anybody from the public that wishes to speak either for or against this promos, proposed amendment to the law? Seeing none? Anybody from the village board wish to weigh in on this? Go ahead, sir. Or man, who's, who'd like to, who'd like to speak?
I'm just saying, full disclosure, I have two dogs. One of them is Norm, is a Labrador Retriever. Gigi is a partial, he's a labra bull, partial pitbull Labrador. But his head looks like Beetlejuice, so he is not really a pitbull. In any case, the law, the current law does not say that, that you, that it was applicable to, you know, ninety percent, or it had to be a hundred percent, okay? So I just want full disclosure that I do have two dogs, one has some pitbull in them, but I'm, but I can still vote.
All right. See, you yelled at me when I did that last, last month. So, well, you didn't yell, but you put your, you facepalmed, so, which is, which is your version of yelling. So, yes.
I would, I would further add that just based on recent training I acquired during the NICOM conference, working on behalf of the taxpayers of Cornwall and Hudson, it was discussed and aired that, well, the, the requirements of recusal were, were discussed briefly, and in my opinion, the ownership of a pitbull and/or participation in public debate about the law at the time it was enacted does not require recusal from any member of this body, to my knowledge. And that's just based on my opinion, based on the training I received.
That's why I'm not recusing.
All right. Well, I'm in, I'm in the same boat, because I own a mix as well, and there are, like I said, I think the village has many, a number of people that own those, those pets. And I know ignorance of the law is no excuse, as the attorneys always say, but I'm sure there's a lot of people in the village that are unaware that this is a law on the books. So we're looking to amend it. Seeing nobody from the public that wished to speak, the board has weighed in on this. Joe, I can go ahead and, can we do the resolution now, or should we?
Either, either way, just close the, close the.
I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing regarding the adoption of a local law to amend village code, chapter sixty-nine, to eliminate breed-specific dog restrictions. I got a second from Dave. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to jump around a little bit. I'm going to go ahead and move up the resolution to right now, since it's in front of me, and I'll go ahead and read this as is. Whereas a resolution was duly adopted by the village board of the village of Cornwall and Hudson on April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, designated itself as lead agency pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, hereafter referred to as SECR, and scheduling a public hearing to be held by said governing body on May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven PM at the village of Cornwall and Hudson Village Hall to hear all interested persons on a proposed local law to amend village code, chapter one sixty-five, concerning the setting of water rates for out-of-village water.
It's a wrong one.
Oh, it's a dog.
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah.
Don't match.
Nope.
Sorry about that.
Um, to amend the village code, chapter, I'm going to have to do this off the fly. After subsection sixty-nine dash five, regarding restrictions related to dogs, and notice of said public hearing was, see, it's just got a mix in there. Said public hearing was duly advertised in the official newspaper of said village according to law, and whereas said public hearing was held on May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four at Village Hall, and all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak on behalf or in opposition to said proposed local law, and whereas the village board of Cornwall and Hudson, after due deliberation, finds it in the best interest of said village to adopt said local law. Now, therefore be it resolved, the village board finds, one, that the proposed local law is classified as an unlisted action under SECR, it has no significant adverse environmental impacts, and issues a negative declaration thereon. Number two, that the adoption of the proposed local law is in the best interest of the residents of the village, and hereby adopts said local law, number, what number is this, of two thousand and twenty-four?
This is, um.
Can't be many, two or three.
The dog is two.
All right. Local law number two of two thousand and twenty-four, entitled, quote, "A local law to amend chapter sixty-nine of the village code," entitled, quote, "Animal Control," close quote, "to eliminate breed-specific regulations on dogs," close quote. And number three, hereby directs that the village clerk entered said local law in the minutes of this meeting, and the local law of the village of Cornwall and Hudson, and to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of State of New York. Like to make a motion to pass this. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on. Next item is the public hearing for water rates and the local law related to same. Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing on water rates. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Anybody from the public wish to speak in regards to the water rates change? And to give my little preamble now, inside the public hearing, I'll say this. Regarding water rates, since the village has been setting water rates going back to eighteen ninety-five, the village started a water system in eighteen eighty-five, when we became a village. Subsection one sixty-five dash six regarding usage charges, line A states, "The charges for village water shall be established by the village board." However, back on September third of nineteen seventy-four, at a meeting at the village offices, that was presided over by Mayor Donahue, and was attended by trustees Farnworth, Caston, Trainer, and Brassel, the trustee Farnsworth, who was the chair lady of the Water Commission at the time, presented the following motion, quote, "In order that the taxpayers of the village of Cornwall should not be penalized for higher assessments on the water facilities in the town of Cornwall, the Water Committee recommends raising the water rates for those users outside the corporate limits of the village of Cornwall to eighty percent in excess of present village rates and an increase of hydrant rental from fifty-five dollars to a hundred dollars per year per hydrant." So, subsection B under usage charges, remember, A states, "The charges for the village water shall be established by the village board, the water authority." Subsection B states, and as a direct result of that September third, nineteen seventy-four resolution of the village board under Mayor Donahue, subsection B states, "The charges for customers outside of the village of Cornwall and Hudson shall be eighty percent higher than those charged within the village." Except for the fact that during the eighties, that eighty percent was moved to seventy-nine percent, and then down to seventy percent, where it remained from nineteen ninety and change until two thousand and eleven, when it was dropped from seventy percent down to fifty-two percent. And then over the course of the next couple of years, and finally in two thousand and eighteen, the large, the drop went from fifty-two percent over village rates to thirty-six percent to its current difference of plus thirty-three percent. Everybody outside of the village pays sixteen dollars per thousand gallons, village residents pay twelve dollars. So we have them in charge in plus eighty. So the village board is seeking to remove that, which doesn't remove any of the authority of the village board to set water rates, it just doesn't constrict us on, again, something that we're not enforcing. So we'll still set the rates at what we see fit and righteous, but we will not be restricted or constricted by the eighty percent upcharge for everyone outside of the village. That's the school system.
And they're not changing.
And they're not changing. We're not looking to change water rates tonight at all.
It's important.
All right. So having said that, does anybody in the public wish to speak in regards to water And the changing of the plus eighty percent upcharge? Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, I'm going to make a resolution to adopt a local law to amend village code. I think this one is right, Joe. I'm going to go with it until it's.
You know this one.
Well, then I'm going to go with what you're giving me right now, then. Okay. To adopt a local law to amend village code, chapter one sixty-five, concerning the setting of water rates for out-of-village water customers. Whereas a resolution was duly adopted by the village board of the village of Cornwall and Hudson on April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, designated itself as lead agency pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, hereafter referred to as SECR, and scheduling a public hearing to be held by said governing body on May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven PM at village of Cornwall and Hudson Village Hall, to hear all interested persons on a proposed local law to amend village code, chapter one sixty-five, concerning the setting of water rates for out-of-village water customers, and whereas notice of said public hearing was duly advertised in the official newspaper of said village, according to law, and whereas said public hearing was held on May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, at the village hall, and all parties and tenants were permitted an opportunity to speak on behalf of or in opposition to said proposed local law, and whereas the village board of Cornwall and Hudson, after due deliberation, finds it in the best interest of said village to adopt said local law. Now therefore be it resolved, that this village board finds, one, that the proposed local law is classified as an unlisted action under SECR, has no significant adverse environmental impacts, and issues a negative declaration thereon. Number two, that the adoption of the proposed local law is in the best interest of the residents of the village, and hereby adopts said local law, number three, of two thousand and twenty-four, entitled, quote, "A local law amending chapter one sixty-five," entitled, quote, "Water," close quote, "to eliminate section one sixty-five six, subsection B, concerning outside-of-village customer water rates," close quote. And three, hereby directs the village clerk enter said local law into the minutes of this meeting and in the local law book of the village of Cornwall and Hudson, and to give due notice of the adoption of said local law to the Secretary of the State of New York. All right, I'd like to make that motion for that resolution to pass. May I have a second? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. That is done, I can close these books, move that out of the way, and move on with the meeting. All right. Monthly department reports. The treasurer's report, which is my responsibility. The open utility bouncer's report for the end of December reads as follows. Village water, sewer, garbage, and penalties.
This is the current, because she didn't give it to me today.
Okay. All right. The April monthly water report for the village, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and nineteen cents. The town, three hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ninety-five cents, totaling five hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars and fourteen cents. Warrant number five, the total is two hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-six cents, including prepaid's. And the monthly revenue expenditure reports by fund, the general fund revenue, three million, ninety-two thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents. Expenditures of nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-five cents. Water fund revenues of eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventeen cents, with expenditures of sixty, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, twenty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents. Sewer fund revenue in the amount of eighty-two thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and seventeen cents, with expenditures of twenty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-one cents. Total receipts, four million, sixty-five thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and seven cents, or forty-six point eight-three, eight-four percent in anticipated revenues. And for expenditures, one million, six hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, or eighteen point five-six, four-four percent in anticipated expenditures through the month of April. The balance collected for sewer capital fund, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and eight cents. And the total taxes collected through April twenty-fourth, two million, eight hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-one cents. Some side notes, training is ongoing between Megan and, Megan Gishwind, Jean Mahoney, and the Springbrook personnel in regards to treasurer duties for the village. We've received checks from Central Hudson for milling and paving of Maple Road, which if you've noticed, if you've been up on Maple Road, which is up on the mountain, it has been milled. Dave, when do we anticipate that's going to be paved?
I got a phone call this afternoon, Tuesday, Wednesday, next week.
And we have a check in hand from Central Hudson in the amount of eighty-two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars to finance. First quarter sales tax received from Orange County, one hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ten cents. And our night class interest, for those of you interested, as of the morning of April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars and eighty-six cents. And with that said, I'll move along to the building department and turn it over to trustee Carnwright.
Okay, report for April, twenty twenty-four, village of Cornwall and Hudson Building Department. Building permits issued, seven. Certificate of Compliance Occupancy issued, ten. On-site inspections, twenty-five. Violations, five. Stop-work orders, zero. Municipal searches, three. Solar panels, zero. Fire inspections, two. Manny Carmona, code enforcement officer, is off tonight.
Mr. Moore, anything to add to that report for the board?
Uh, no, no, that's not.
Okay. All right, thank you. I know one of the things that we are diligently working on are summonses for violations, people that are in non-compliance of code, because if your neighbor is not complying with code, it's unfair to you, and the village is currently in the process of securing and serving those summonses, correct?
Yes.
Another thing I asked the building department to do is to look at properties that are involved in benign neglect, where they're not mowing their lawn. We've given people plenty of time to round into spring and mow, mow their lawns. There are some properties that haven't been tended to, and we are dealing with that. I get, I get a number of complaints a week on people that live next door to somebody whose grass is higher than the New York State code requirement of twelve inches. So, we're staying on top of that and we're doing the rounds in the village to make sure people are taking care of their properties, correct?
Yes.
All right, any questions for Mr. Moore from the board? All right, moving on. Next is the fire department, trustee Paleota.
Number of events, fire, there was one event, EMS calls, four. Good-intent calls, one. False alarms, four. Watercraft search, rescue, two. Canceled en route, one. Drills, two. Three meetings. Apparatus and station maintenance, one. Training, two. Recruitment, one. Total events, twenty-two. Boat four sixteen is in service for the season and is docked at the Cornwall Yacht Club. Hose testing has been completed for all apparatus and reserve hose. Seven lengths of hose failed and will be replaced. Firefighter Gloria Marina has completed firefighter, one. Engine four twelve was, was involved in an accident. Personnel were not injured, but the engine will be out of service for an extended period. Tower ladder four thirteen went out to repair the welds flat during the ladder testing. The paint above the welds was cracked and the ladder did not require repair. The department has purchased three automatic external defibrillators. One will replace that obsolete AED on rescue four seventeen, and the other two will go on engine four eleven and TL four thirteen.
Chief, anything to add?
Just one comment on the fire. The driver that day was Wade Knoller, it was his first fire, and it went absolutely smoothly. You never know what's going to happen at your first fire, but he got water out right away.
Outstanding. All right, anything else? Mr. Chair? Nothing to add? Trustee Brain?
Just question if it's possible, since the work session, two weeks ago, was it two weeks ago or a week ago? Two, whenever.
Week ago.
A week ago.
Yeah.
Uh, any further progress on a solution for the, uh, out-of-commission engine?
No, nothing for the board to act on. We, we did decide that it would be unwise to purchase something the same age as one. So we will be looking for something definitely younger than twenty-five years.
But in the meantime, mutual aid, uh, we have committed resources in other neighboring departments to handle. If any lack. Okay.
And the age on that engine was, i- is it a nineteen eighty-nine?
It was thirty-five years old.
Thirty-five years old. Okay. All right. Thank you, chief.
Oh, and, oh, I'm sorry, actually. And the other driver in the incident, uh, is that, is that, uh, to our knowledge? I know that, that it happened in the town of Cornwall, and that I understood that the town police were working to identify and or cite and or investigate further the accident.
We, we gave them a license plate number that we had. I haven't heard anything from them.
But they are pursuing him.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Moving on, police department. Trustee Brain?
Uh, Cornwall Hudson Police Department, monthly report, April first through thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. There were four hundred and three total calls for service. Uh, there was one call for felony burglary. Uh, there was one call related to fraud under misdemeanors and violations. And in terms of arrests, there were two felony arrests and one arrest on a warrant. Um, on a C O H P D warrant. Uh, vehicle and traffic updates. There were three property damage accidents, four traffic summonses issued, eight traffic warnings issued, three parking summonses issued, twelve traffic enforcement posts, and two speed or radar sign postings. On non-criminal activity, there were four fire response calls, one domestic incident, five suspicious incident calls, five animal complaints. And in departmental assists, our police department assisted the town nine times, EMS twelve times, other agencies once, other police agencies once, performed one welfare check, uh, assisted two citizens, and no other assists of other C O H departments. During the month of April, twenty twenty-four, the Cornwall Hudson Police Department received a grant award of approximately five thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars from the New York State D C J S, New York State Department of Criminal Justice Services, and Federal Bureau of Justice to be used toward the purchase of four A E Ds, uh, automated external defibrillators for C O H P D officers, which I believe are now installed, this is my edit, now installed in our vehicles. During the month of April, twenty twenty-four, Cornwall Hudson P D Sergeant Ruger and, and police officer Moran both attended Ghost Guns, the new threat training, which was held at the Orange County E nine-one-one center in Goshen. During the month as well, Cornwall Hudson P D officers Moran and Thompson both attended motor, motorcycle enforcement training, which was held at the Orange County E nine-one-one center in Goshen, New York. Respectfully submitted, Chief Stephen E. Dixon.
Sergeant Ruger, anything to add?
I'll just add that recently, the, the Village of Cornwall Hudson Police Department also received the following grant awards, uh, above what, uh, trustee Brain had stated. Uh, the law enforcement tech, tech, technology grant through New York State D C J S, approximately fourteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars. It is, uh, the chief's intention and hope to utilize the grant towards the purchase of a card scan, fingerprint booking submission program and hardware. Currently, C O H P D piggybacks on the town, uh, card scan system by having our own card scan. It will allow officers to process defendants solely at our own headquarters and not have to transfer the defendant to the Town of Cornwall P D. Officers would also become more proficient in the system, having it here at our own headquarters. Um, also, the New York State Police Track Scan Award for four brand-new, uh, in-vehicle computer scanners and thermal printers. With this grant award, Cornwall Hudson Police Department will receive four brand-new computers, scanners, and thermal printers. Officers will be able to continue issuing traffic services and file supporting deposition, write motor vehicle accident reports, et cetera, via the tracks computer system, replacing the old vehicle laptop computers we currently have.
All right. Thank you. So since you, I'll put you on the spot, since you were one of the attendees at the Ghost Guns, um, uh, training, let me ask you this. So, so Ghost Guns, for those that are, you know, that, that, that aren't familiar with that term, are guns that are not made out of metal and stamped in a factory. So, um, a, a, a weapon typically has two serial numbers on it. One is on the slide, and the other's on the receiver, so you can match the pieces. Um, and they're made out of, they're made out of metal. Um, that's why we have metal detectors, and that's what keeps us safe when you go through a metal detector, um, to go to an event or to get onto an airplane. Ghost Guns are made with three D printers. Um, and they are made out of, uh, high-impact plastic in some instances, and they don't have serial numbers, so there's no way to track them. You don't know who owns them. Um, what was, what was the takeaway? Anything new that the Board of Trustees should be aware of in regards to Ghost Guns? Obviously, that's not something we've encountered here in the village yet. But is this, uh, what, what, what was the takeaway for you?
Uh, the takeaway was a, a lot of information as to what to look for. Um, a lot of them are three D printed or, uh, plastic polymer. Uh, they also sell what they call eighty percenters. And due to the laws, if it's eighty percent completed, they'll actually hand you a jig when you purchase it, and you would, um, make your own holes, but it's all set up. So you could, uh, effectively purchase these items and then construct your own firearm and skirting the laws. Uh, the laws have changed, uh, making it so you would actually have to serialize, um, those weapons if you are in possession. Um, the laws are very convoluted. Uh, they're, they're complicated. Um, so the A T F was there, and we had a lot of, uh, discussion. But, um, from the officer's safety standpoint, it really kinda showed how easy it is, you know, to, to have a three D printer. While we were in the training, they three D printed while the briefing was going on, and at the conclusion of the training, um, there was a mechanism to transform weapons, um, from semi-automatic to fully automatic, uh, in a matter of forty-five minutes, ten bucks' worth of material, and a simple program.
Filing the sear down like it used to be?
Yep. Um, learned about Glock switches, um, and the damage that they could potentially do. So it was a lot of, um, understanding the laws, what to look for, uh, what to bring back to the agency. So we did bring back, uh, the flyers that we received, and it has one of the Q R codes. Uh, so any of our officers can scan the code and effectively, um, look at the brochure of all the information that was out there. It was, uh, it was truly an eye-opener. Um, in my career, I've actually, um, made an arrest on a Ghost Gun. Uh, it came from one of the southern states, and, uh, it was a large process involving the A T F, the C I D office, um, cause it was, uh, affiliation, uh, with West Point. And, uh, the things that entail is, is quite a lot, but, uh, we just wanna make sure that, you know, all of our officers, myself and Officer Moran, and putting the information out, that everyone has the knowledge to be fully equipped to keep these residents safe. I mean, that's why we're here, and it's our duty. Um, and I believe that it was a worthwhile class, that I did learn a lot. Um, even having experience, I don't know everything, I'm unafraid to admit that. And every ounce of training that I can receive and more knowledge that I can learn to help better assist, uh, the community, I will continue to do so.
Excellent. Thank you. And since I got you on the spot right now.
I was ready to hit the red button.
What is, what is the latest on how we're training our officers to detect somebody under the influence of, of, of marijuana? Are we giving our officers any training? I know that Albany was grappling with this. I know that, uh, the Fraternal Order of Police was grappling with this. How we can do field sobriety tests? Um, we have methods to do that with somebody under the influence of alcohol? We don't have any unless you have specialized training determining whether or not somebody is under the influence of, uh, marijuana. Has anything come out lately on that? Any guidance from the D A's office, from Albany, from the Attorney General's office? In you pull somebody over, you smell marijuana, what do you need to ring them up and, and charge them with driving under the influence?
Uh, due to the fact that you brought that up, Mr. Mayor, there actually is brand-new training coming down the pipeline for the specific D W A I in reference to marijuana. So at this point in time, I mean, I, obviously, officers are trained. Um, there is what they call a D R E, a Drug Recognition Expert. Um, so if I were to suspect something or somebody else, there are people that already have a higher-level classification of training and that can be called onto the scene to help assess and handle the situation.
Do we have them in our department, or is that something out of the county?
No, a D R E, uh, we don't actually have any. Um.
So it's the state police or the county?
It's whatever, so essentially, whatever agencies that have a lot of D W I arrests, uh, they have that training and experience. So when you pick a D R E, it's somebody that, that does those types of stops a lot. And that's kinda like, um, they're an S M E, a subject matter expert in that field. So.
So what's our protocol? We, we're down, we're doing a patrol at two o'clock in the morning on a, on a, on a Monday morning, and we come across somebody seating in a vehicle down at Donahue Memorial Park. They roll their windows down, the smell wafts out of the car, their pupils are dilated, they appear stoned to you. But what is our protocol? Like, how do we, how do we enforce that? Do we, do we stop, hold in place, make a call to the sheriff's office, to the state police? What's our protocol?
So before, um, before anything, whatever officer it was, would, would do their job. They would actually do the S F S Ts that they were trained to do. Um, and depending on how those went or their suspicions, um, the, the D R E, they, they do exist. Uh, they work in agencies that have a, a high volume of D W I arrests that send out for the specialized training for these officers. The county has them, I'm sure City of Newburgh has them. Um, they could potentially be called to the scene, but even, even without that, it is still possible for an officer, um, to use his, uh, verbal judo and, um, skills to, you know, see if they would submit to a blood test. A lot of the times they do. Um, you know, when you have the conversation with people, there are ways to enforce the law still.
But you've gotta arrest them first to do that, right?
Yes.
How would you draw blood?
No, if they, if they, if they want, if you ask them to submit a, a blood test.
That, that would be after the arrest. I mean, a lot of the times, they, they will submit, sometimes they, they, they won't. It's not, it's not mandatory to have the blood for the arrest. Um, but if they do submit, or, or the urine sample, if they do submit, uh, it just helps further the case. And there's been plenty of times where, um, that's able to be ascertained. The, the county, cause I saw it on the training schedule, they are putting out, so you have the, the regular S F S Ts, and then you have the D R Es. There is training that I saw on the training calendar, and the chief and I were talking about it, um, to send people. So it's basically broadening the scope of the S F S Ts that all officers learned in the academy to make it less of, uh, a gap between the regular S F S T and then D R E. So that training is out there.
Is there a field sobriety test for marijuana?
So a field sobriety test is, is literally looking for impairment, right? So that impairment with alcohol, um, for some of the tests is more prevalent. So a D R E, and that's probably what they're gonna get into in the rest of the training, they look at other things that a regular S F S, S F S T wouldn't look into. So there's different things like convergence, um, there're more advanced techniques with the eyes and what the eyes do. Um, so what a D R E would be able to know, what they have to know, is they could tell you it's alcohol plus cocaine, alcohol plus marijuana, because drugs have synergistic effects. So when you're talking about drugs and alcohol, one plus one equals not two. It could be four, six, eight, because of the way that those things combine. And they have all the training and experience in order to be able to ascertain what that combination is. So when I'm doing an S F S T, it's are you able to operate that vehicle or not? When they're doing it, it's really figuring out kinda what drugs they're on and being able to make a, a harder case. So this extra training, which no one has received yet, but, um, I would like to send officers, I believe is gonna put them more into the realm of being able to ascertain, uh, the marijuana. It was, uh, on the Orange County website.
It's on Orange County. Okay. All right. Just, go ahead.
Just one last question. So with the blood test, though, unlike when you're, when it's alcohol, you're determining with the, you get a number.
Blood alcohol.
Blood alcohol content. So what, what's the equivalent of that? Um, the...
I mean, there's a lot of litigation, um, so marijuana's gonna be yes or no. There is no way for me to, to, to look at a number on a sheet and know how high they are. And then there's obviously a lot of legal battles where, I mean, obviously, I don't smoke marijuana, but if I did last week and it's still in my system, I need to be able to do my job, S F S Ts, to prove that you were impaired on the road. So the blood will show that there's that presence, but it doesn't necessarily mean that you were, um, under the influence on the stop. That's where I come into play. So there's a lot of litigation and putting issues together, so.
T H C, which is marijuana, stays in the system for thirty days.
Yeah, it's fat-sizable.
You can, you know, you can tell how soon or how recently somebody drank alcohol. It's hard to do. All right. I don't wanna, I appreciate that.
At the risk of turning it into a work session, I'm loving the education. The, if you conduct a field sobriety test on someone, and they're unable to comply with the instructions, or they fall over giggling, or whatever happens, that's impairment, right? You can, if you, yeah.
So it's, um...
They get out and they can't function, it doesn't matter what they're on, right? You can make an arrest if you need to.
If you refuse, then it's a, an automatic, um, one-year surrender of your license. Um, so there's, there's a lot of implied things that come along with a license that people don't always understand. Um, so.
But there's a difference, so, and again, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm going down the rabbit hole.
There's difference between a P D T and a field sobriety.
To agree to blow into a breathalyzer at the scene.
Yes.
One thing. To do this with T H C, you would have to haul them into a medical facility and get them to agree to have blood drawn, right?
Or urine. And even then, even then, the results don't matter to a certain extent.
To a certain extent.
All right.
So the trustee Brain was talking about was the P D T, not the breathalyzer, correct?
If you, if you see somebody swerving over the line.
The problem, the problem becomes is whether or not it's a misdemeanor or felony.
Yeah.
All right. All right. Sorry about that, but thank you.
We have a judge here.
Thank you for that, and, uh...
I have a question.
We have a lawyer.
Sure.
And we got a judge right now.
Do you mind?
You wanna go down that rabbit hole? Let's go. We're already there.
But the, um, but the field sobriety test is, if you refuse the field sobriety test.
It wasn't refusing the field sobriety, it was refusing of the preliminary breath, breath test, the P D T. That's actually what does it. Um, but if you're only using marijuana, then you would, uh, very clearly be very willing, more than likely, um, to take.
P D T.
The P D T. So when, when you talk about that law, just to not confuse anybody, it is the preliminary breath test on the side of the road, not the breathalyzer that they would be, um, subjected to at the station.
Gotcha.
Um, and if they only had the drugs, then we would clearly blow zeros and possibly still be impaired, which is where the, there's a D W I section, D W A I section, and a whole D W A I drug section. So there's eleven ninety-two, eleven ninety-three, they, there's a lot of sections, a lot of...
And the A I sections are misdemeanors, not felonies.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you.
And thank you for, thank you all for, um, for tolerating that. I just wanted that information, so, thank you. All right. Department of Public Works, trustee Brain?
Uh, Village of Cornwall Hudson, Department of Public Works, April, twenty twenty-four report. Trash collected for the month, one hundred forty-four point three-seven tons. Recycling collected for the month, one, uh, eighteen point two tons. Yard waste collected for the month, one hundred yards. Repairs and maintenance, village-owned vehicles and equipment. Mowing and trimming of village-owned properties has resumed. Sweet, uh, streets were swept. Blacktop patching has begun. Uh, the new hot box is in service. The boat docks were reinstalled. The, uh, the D P W repaired the road at Donahue Farm. The spring bulk cleanup was completed. Hazardous trees were removed. New sidewalks were installed on Currie Road, and curbing was replaced across from the firehouse in front of, and in front of painters. Uh, note, on June second through fifth, uh, Superintendent Halverson, along with working leader Wayne Yeoman, will be attending a highway in Ithaca, uh, I guess highway training in Ithaca provided by Cornell University. David Halverson, Superintendent of Public Works.
David, anything to add?
Well, we, our, uh, mechan, mechanic service vehicle has, has arrived. That's, uh, should be going in service very soon. And we also got notification, our front-end loader has been delivered to Marlboro, and that will be delivered to us tomorrow. So we'll have that.
Did we get those, uh, machines registered today with the, with the...
Yes, I got them done.
Okay, good. Okay, good. I know that the, the clerks, the county clerk's mobile office was up in, up at town hall today, so Wayne told me you were going to handle that.
Yes.
Okay? That was the hot box, and what else?
The new mechanics truck.
And the new mechanics truck, okay? Good. Was it easy?
No. Had a whole lot more paperwork to fill out.
Going to Goshen?
Yes.
All right, then, that's all that matters. All right. Beats the heck out of driving out to the county seat. What else, Dave?
Well, like I said, we're going to be attending that, uh, highway school in Ithaca. It's a great opportunity, like the sergeant was talking about with the training and you guys. Uh, this one is actually run by the state. There's five, I think there's five hundred and twenty-five different municipalities that show up at this. It's run by Cornell University. So it starts on Sunday and ends Wednesday.
Who's in charge when you two guys are gone?
The assistant leader, Tom Lyons, will be running the show while we're out.
All right.
We'll be out Monday, Tuesday, re, return Wednesday afternoon.
You'll be out Monday, Tuesday. Monday is Memorial Day, correct?
No, 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 that's June sec, June, we leave June second.
I'm sorry. Got you.
Sunday, June second.
Got it, okay.
The day of River Fest, we leave.
Okay, got it, all right.
Well, man.
All right, yeah. All right, what else, Dave? Anything else?
Uh, no, that's it for now.
All right, um, want to say thank you to the DPW. As you can tell, we're, our final sidewalk project is, is ongoing right now, out in front of Village Hall. Again, we want to make Hudson Street as walkable and as safe as possible. We're replacing some sidewalks that are probably twenty or twenty-five years old down by where Two Alises is and, and down at that end. Um, also, the village worked with a local contractor, Brian Foley, who did an outstanding job. If you have not been by the Hudson Highland Nature Museum, the, the WEC bill, which stands for Wildlife Environment Center?
Wildlife Education Center, although I think the C might be something else.
Wildlife Education Center, I think that's, I think that's right.
Campus. I saw campus written somewhere, anyway.
Um, the village last year, uh, for the first time ever, because it had been oil and chipped, had it, um, had it paved their parking lot down there. We're going to get that straight sometime soon, got it for them. And then, go ahead.
Uh, we, we were, we were hoping to have everything straight before Memorial Day, but unfortunately, with all the rain that we've had, it prohibits, uh, painting outdoors.
But, uh, Foley's crew did an excellent job of doing a walkway and changing out the stone, the steps that were there. I think those steps were there when I was three years old in nineteen sixty-eight, when it first opened and we had my first birthday party there. I think it was actually the same steps that, uh, they finally did a, a really nice job. I hadn't had a chance to go down there and take a look at it, it, it really, really looks nice. So thanks, Dave, for that. We're getting everything beautified before Memorial Day. Memorial Day, all the plantings will be done, so those that are worried and concerned about, you know, the areas at the bottom of Duncan, where we, where the plants go, and the plant, the planter out here, the planter at the town-village line, the islands around here, all those will be taken care of and beautified before Memorial Day. So what else, Dave? Anything I left out? Trustees, anything for the DPW super? Nope. All right, moving on. Uh, last but not, no, next to last but not least, trustee cornright, the water department.
Village of Cornwall and Hudson Water Department report, April twenty twenty-four monthly report. Monthly production, twenty-two million, two hundred and eighteen thousand gallons. Daily average, seven hundred and forty-one thousand gallons samples. We collected forty-seven, seven samples in accordance with our approved water quality monitoring plan. Under treatment, we repaired a chlorine leak at Jackson Avenue Water Treatment Plant. Installation of new affluent valve at Black Rock Water Treatment Plant was completed. Uh, awaiting SCADA system upgrades to be completed. Transmission distribution, forty-four mark outs were completed and installed a new fire hydrant on Continental Road. Water served a shut-off at owner's request. Two forty-six Main, two seventy-five Hudson, and twelve Avenue B. Site restoration work completed at leak sites that occurred over the winter. Replaced broken four-inch water main valve on Partridge Road. Removed nineteen thirties-era twelve-inch water main interconnection with eighteen ninety-five ten-inch water main at Black Rock Water Treatment Plant. Meters, red commercial meters, thirteen final, uh, water meter readings were completed. Five residential water meters, uh, were replaced. Four miscellaneous jobs completed. Fifteen water line inspections were completed. Other, chief water plant operator, Don Bride, and water maintenance worker, Daniel Demetrov, uh, attended continued education training in accordance with New York State Department of Health requirements. Tool delivery of new Kubota mini excavators, excuse me, and new Bobcat utility task vehicle, UTV. Painted interior Maple Road Pump Station as part of the year building renovation project. Michael P. Traynor, Water Superintendent.
All right, as I previously pointed out, Superintendent Traynor, as well as his two assistants, um, Rich Smith and Dan Nye are at training upstate for the water department. And Don Bride is in charge of the department while they're away. They will be back sometime early Wednesday afternoon, so. Um, if you've got any questions for water, you'll have to hold them or have to reach out tonight after the meeting. All right, next, certainly not least, um, the New Windsor Cornwall EMS Deputy Mayor Kane.
Okay, the report for, um, April twenty twenty-four with respect to personnel. There were two new volunteers, they had no staff injuries or issues. As for operational, there were four hundred and thirty-eight total dispatches, one hundred percent of the calls were covered. And that's eighteen hundred calls for the year. Three hundred and eight patients were transported, that's a record. Uh, two hundred and thirty-eight New Windsor nine-one-one calls, fifty-three Cornwall nine-one-one calls, and fourteen Village of Cornwall and Hudson nine-one-one calls. The average response times were six minutes, forty-three seconds in New Windsor, six minutes, thirty-one seconds in Cornwall, and six minutes, twenty-seven seconds in Cornwall and Hudson. The Cornwall unit covered sixteen calls in New Windsor. New Windsor covered eleven calls in Cornwall and the village. All vehicles are in ser, in service. Repairs were made to numerous emergency lights that have been broken. Pet, pet oxygen masks were placed in the New Windsor units. And EMS week is in May, and it's the administrative and other, their new community board member from Cornwall, Neil Hildebrand, has joined the board. Our COVID grant funds from twenty twenty were taken back without notice. We had twenty-eight thousand removed from our Medicare funding last month. We'd asked for this funding to be forgiven by Pat Ryan's office, but with no success. The board members attended a three-day conference on EMS management. Michael Bigg, Chief Operating Officer.
I think one of the, one of the things in being up at the New York Conference of Mayors with, uh, my true trustee colleagues, I think in talking to our colleagues upstate, downstate, across the state, um, we really are blessed and lucky to have the relationship we have with New Windsor EMS. Um, EMS, uh, regionalization is going to become par for the course. And if you saw some of the recent deals that the city of Middletown and the city of Newburgh struck with local, um, private, uh, ambulance services, um, I think it's a, it's a good thing that we got in on the ground floor when we did, because there's a lot of folks right now, a lot of municipalities seeking to partner with an organization like New Windsor EMS. And we are, we're in a good stead that we're rounding into our last year of the three-year contract. And that is going to be something I'm going to be talking to the board about soon, because we're going to have to negotiate a new contract going forward. So that is, that is going to be happening this year and soon. Okay, um, without further ado, moving on to the resolutions. Um, the first one is to appoint a full-time police officer. Um, the board interviewed the police officer, um, that is going to become one of our full-timers, um, last Monday, uh, at the thirteenth prior to the work session. Um, and I'm going to make a motion to appoint Mr. Saul Rodriguez as a full-time police officer to the Cornwall and Hudson Police Department. Officer Rodriguez's appointment is approved pursuant to the current collective bargaining agreement, that's the PBA agreement, and is subject to the longest probationary period provided for by the Orange County Rules for the Administration of the Civil Service Law as amended, January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four. Mr. Rodriguez will have five years credited, five years credited service years, fifteen vacation days, and four personal days as he starts his tenure with the village. Once formally approved for hire by the COH Village Board, Mr. Rodriguez will be sworn in as a full-time police officer with COHPD on Friday, May thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Time to be determined. Um, Sergeant Ruger, which, uh, which line is he going to be working? The, the C-line? My understanding is, the two to ten?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, two PM to ten PM. Um, I had the privilege of marrying Mr. Rodriguez. He was the first marriage that I conducted in the village. Um, he and his wonderful, uh, fiancee at the time were married down at the gazebo. Um, he was an NYPD officer at the time, and little did I know that, uh, here we are, three years later, literally three years later, and he's now going to become a member of the police department here. I was very impressed then, and I take it my colleagues were equally taken by him, um, during the interview. He's going to be a wonderful addition to, um, our police department. I believe he lives in Rock Tavern?
Yes.
Yes, in Rock Tavern. So, um, local guy, and he's going to be happy to be working a reasonable shift. And he works two to tens right now, he works the C-line already, so it'll be an easy transition for him. All right, so I'm going to make a motion to, uh, to appoint him as a full-time, to appoint Mr. Saul Rodriguez as a full-time police officer, subject to the requirements as, uh, as earlier stated. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and now I have one with regrets, uh, the resignation of part-time police officer Le Boden. I'm going to make a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Cornwall and Hudson part-time police officer, Daniel Le Boden. Officer Le Boden has been a, a, a great asset to the department, providing years of experience from working as an officer within the city of Peekskill Police Department and within the Town of Lloyd Police Department. I'd also like to note that Officer Le Boden has been with the COHPD since two thousand and eighteen. And on behalf of all the officers at COH AP, uh, PD, um, the chief is extremely great, grateful for Officer Le Boden's service, and I second that on behalf of this village board. He served with, with honor and distinction. Um, so with regrets, I'd like to make a motion to accept his resignation. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, the loan of sculptures. So, um, this has been a much discussed, um, uh, program um, that the Town of Cornwall and the Village of Cornwall and Hudson are undergoing in agreeing to take on as loans some, uh, some sculptures created by Miss Vivian V-I-V-I-E-N Collins, C-O-L-L-E-N-S. See what I did there, Mr. Journalist, for you? Um, by Miss Collins, um, who is a, at least a nationally renowned sculptor. Um, and if you've been to Bridge Street and you've seen the orange sculpture that she has there, um, the, there will be three sculptures that will find their place in the village. And people will ask, well, why is this? Well, we have the Storm King Arts Center, we are a place of majestic beauty here in the Hudson Valley, and we're trying to attract, uh, more folks to come see our scene, to eat in our restaurants. And there is some, obviously, the, the Greater Cornwall Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring the Art Walk, which is every month now. And unfortunately, the first one got rained out, but we, which we'll be having monthly. And we want to get people walking in our village and in the town, and this art will be something that will also be a destination for people to come to see. So where in the village? Um, the one place that, uh, that we've agreed to place one of these, um, one of these, these pieces of art is at the triangle where Bayview Avenue runs into Dock Hill Road and intersects with Hudson Street. So there's a triangle there, there's a sign for the Hudson Island Nature Museum there. And once two eighteen reopens up again, and we start getting more motor vehicle and pedestrian traffic and biking traffic, um, along two eighteen, it'll be a perfect place to kind of welcome people into the village, and it's just a perfect spot. Now, the insurance company, we have the insurance that is provided by the Reese Group, which handles all of our insurance needs, as well as the fire department's insurance needs. And of recent, the town decided to hire them as well to be their insurance carrier, um, has provided us some numbers to insure these structures. Not structures, pieces of art. These pieces of art are appraised at thirty-five thousand dollars apiece. Um, so they have to be, they have to be, um, insured. Um, that is on the village to do that. Um, a group that consists of Buffy Helt and Eileen Hartman, some of the usual suspects that are always involved in volunteerism and, and doing good things, whether it's with the garden club or the chamber or special events, um, have found some donors that are going to pay for the insurance for the town, because they're taking three structures as well. There'll be a different one put at Bridge Street, there'll be one put at Rings Pond, and one put either on the library property or somewhere adjacent to the library property at Rings Pond. The village will put the aforementioned one down at the triangle. The village is looking, and chief and Mr. Chair, this is probably something that we should probably further discuss on the sidebar, um, the possibility, I guess, that had been floated out of putting, um, a skinny sculpture, for lack of a, a better description, somewhere out there where you have that seating area in front. But I want to make sure that you guys are on board with that. Dave and I had the privilege of going there with the sculptor and her husband and walking it, looking at it. But we have to make sure that, um, it's not going to impair your operations or cause any issues with ingress and egress. So I want to talk to you about that before we fully commit to that location. The third location, um, we had looked at painters, and obviously Jocelyn Calibretta, who, um, has, uh, purchased painters and is in the process of refurbishing it and renovating it and getting ready to potentially open sometime in either late July or early August, um, had flirted with the idea of possibly putting in front of painters, which would have been a good place, kind of where our central business district is. But while she's doing all the renovations and remediations and getting things, um, fixed and set up, um, we're going to, we're going to take a pause on that. And Walden Savings Bank, which is our next-door neighbor on Hudson Street here, has agreed to take one there. So what, what is the village's responsibility? Well, it's going to be pouring a concrete pad for it, it's, uh, that's going to be flush with the ground. And then by the insurance standards, we have to have a do-not-climb-on-this, because these structures, and the village board members have seen them, I've sent them pictures of them, they look almost like a jungle gym, and the appeal for a kid or a drunk adult to climb on them will probably be excused upon quite intoxicating. So, um, we've got to make sure that, that we safely do it and we rope it off with, with chains that are going to be aesthetically pleasing and also make the insurance company comfortable with that arrangement. Um, now, your question is, well, how long is this agreement for? The board's already authorized approving me to sign this agreement with them, subject to us getting the insurance taken care of by the donors and subject to the DPW superintendent being comfortable with how we do this. The town is grappling with the same thing, but this would be a one-year agreement. Now, the plan would be that next year, we would open this up to other artists and potentially remove these pieces of art and putting other pieces there and make this part of our Art Walk, for lack of a better term. And in the event that we don't, or in the event that the artist decides that she wants her sculptures back, because now that they have a place of prominence here and people can see them, they are for sale. So in the event that happens, we will then convert those concrete pads into bases for benches, because we have a line of people in the queue that want to put benches up in Memorial for a family member, and these are good locations for where a bench could go. So with that said, now into this. So I'm going to make the following motion and seek board support. Whereas Newburgh Antique Gallery LLC has offered to loan the Village of Cornwall and Hudson three artistic works created by Vivian Collins to be displayed by the village, and whereas Newburgh Antique Gallery LLC has provided the board with a proposed loan agreement, um, and whereas the village is willing to enter into the said agreement, now therefore be resolved as follows, that the Village of Cor, the Village of Cornwall and Hudson's village board hereby approves the said statutory loan agreement, and that the Village of Cornwall and Hudson Board hereby authorizes the mayor to execute the same and all documents necessary to effectuate the terms therein, subject to the village obtaining the insurance coverage required by the loan agreement. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Question?
Sir?
Did you, uh, tell me today that there are only two pieces of art? I think I referenced three based upon.
There are three. The original agreement was for two, and then because the artist is looking to remove the one that has been on Bridge Street now for two years and replace that with another one, she had offered that to the village. So the village would end up taking three.
So, okay, so the resolution is correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on. Part-time office clerk, I'm going to make a motion to authorize Village Clerk Doris Wickizer to advertise for a part-time office clerk salary to be determined at a future date. Um, purpose in this is, um, but we're going to seek to potentially fulfill a position that may open up. This would be for twenty hours per week at a salary to be negotiated with the village board. So at this juncture, we are seeking to have the village clerk post for this position. May I have a second?
Second.
Doris, anything else to add? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, um, Joe, this is the one that I'm going to, I'm going to lean on you on. So this is an authorization to execute documents for Hill and Dale Abstractors Incorporated. I'm going to make a motion, I'm going to make, uh, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to authorize myself, the mayor, to execute such documents as may be necessary in connection with a village residence, application for title insurance, and Hill and Dale Abstractors, Inc.'s certification of title. Counselor, do you want to put that into English for everyone here, including the village board?
Sure, so we have a local resident who's, essentially the legal description of their property doesn't meet up with the next title owner's legal description of their property. It's a gore. It's basically, it's an omission. You know, sometimes when they prepare deeds, the legal descriptions don't match exactly. So, this woman is trying to get title insurance. Uh, we spoke with the title, uh, company. They've asked us to execute some of these documents. The resident is paying the fees. Um, we have no right title or interest in the property, so, um, I have no, no legal objection to the village proceeding.
Okay. So I'm gonna make that motion, um, which will allow me to execute such documents as approved by council. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on, um, to the interested agency letter to the village of South Blooming Grove. Now, um, I asked the water superintendent to help me understand the situation that's going on right now in the village of South Blooming Grove regarding their sewer project, and because Mike summarized it, I'm just gonna read directly from his email. "The village of South Blooming Grove is proposing a forty million dollar project to construct a sewer system that would encompass their entire village. Currently, only about one-third of their village has access to the existing sewer system. If completed, the new system would discharge one million gallons of treated wastewater into the Satterly Creek. This would be in addition to the Clove Wood Project, which the village board has already weighed in as an interested party and in opposition to, um, which is proposing an additional two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand gallons of their own treated wastewater be discharged into the same Satterly Creek. Again, the Satterly Creek flows into the Mudna Creek, which is very close by our well water system. The village of South Blooming Grove has recently circulated lead agency notice for the environmental review. Our village, Cornwall and Hudson, is not listed as an interested agency since we have no jurisdiction over this matter. What we'd like to do here is have the village board consider authorization for a letter to be sent to the village of South Blooming Grove requesting, quote, interested agency, close quote, status due to our elevated concern that the impact of this treated wastewater discharge, or effluent, will have on the water quality of the Mudna Creek and potentially our drinking water wells." Da-da-da-da-da, da-da-da-da-da. Joseph, what is, I'm sorry, Jim.
Yeah, go ahead. Clarification question, that is. When Mike refers to one million gallons of treated wastewater, is that per day? Per month? Or, 'cause we, water-wise, we have, we do...
I think that is per day.
Right, that's what I thought. 'Cause we're like seven hundred thousand gallons a day.
Yeah. I think that's per day.
I, that's normally the way it's calculated, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so in, Joe, in regards to this, um, so I'm gonna simply, and I'll take your verbiage here. I'm gonna make the motion to authorize the preparation of correspondence seeking to have our village, Cornwall and Hudson, listed as a, quote, interested agency, close quote, via letter or for the village of South Blooming Grove's proposed village-wide sewer system project. Is that, you comfortable with that? Since you wrote it?
I wrote it.
All right, all right. So, so may I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Uh, do we have to prove that we have standing?
Well, we, we, it, it's... They could say no. Yeah, so there, it's a secret issue. So there are two types of agencies, essentially...
Prove that the aquifer belongs to us as much as it, it belongs to them. The aquifer where we're drawing water off of and they're dumping the effluent into.
That's true. So we certainly have an interest, right? But the, for, for agency purposes, using that term as it's used in, uh, under the secret statute, you're either an involved agency or an interested agency. We're not involved, because involved agencies issue permits or approvals or authorize things. So we don't have any, I know Mike used the word jurisdiction, but really, we don't have any authority to approve, disapprove, issue a permit or not. So, since we're not an involved agency, we would like to be an interested agency, meaning that we would be copied, uh, provided with all the secret review information and be involved in the process. Essentially, an interested agency is almost like a member of the public, but in this case, we'd want them to specifically state that we are, um, an interested agency, so they would have the obligation to keep us informed.
Okay.
Doesn't go beyond that, Joe. Meaning, it doesn't give us elevated status. It just gives us informational status.
Correct.
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 Okay. All right, so...
Actually, though, I'm sorry. Does it afford us any specific opportunities to provide opinion or feedback? Or just, does that get lumped in with the general public's comments on hearings or anything that takes place?
Well, we would get specific notice. So we'd be, and, and again, we could probably get that from the village's website or, but, yes. But the idea would be that we are formally, at least, on a list saying that we have an interest in the project.
Did I get a second?
Exactly, you did.
Okay. And, uh, assuming no further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You're gonna prepare the letter, and the letter is going to come from the village or, or is it gonna come from the firm?
I think once I get some more information from Mike, we'll, we'll make that call.
But your, action item for you, this is in your court?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's what I need to know. All right, thank you. Um, all right, we did, we already amended the animal control local law. We already amended the water rates local law. Um, so we'll move on, I'm sorry?
Other business.
Uh, move on to other business. All right, and this should go relatively quickly, 'cause we have some things we have to do in the interim. So I wanna thank the deputy mayor, trustees Carnwright and Brain for handling a lot of this discussion at the work session. Um, but I am going to table the building department fee schedule for one more meeting to give enough time for myself, the deputy mayor, and the building inspectors to sit down for one final, final regarding the adjustment of our building and permit fees that date back to two thousand and twenty-two.
And we may have a special meeting just to do that.
We may have a special meeting just to do that. Okay. Um, next item, um, review of the town's tree law. So here I am, holding seven pages and two sentences of what the Cornwall Conservation Advisory Council, um, chaired by Carla Castillo, um, of which our trustee Carnwright is a member of the CCAC, ground through, took them a couple of years and came up with a tree law. The tree law is not to stop somebody from clearing brush on their property, but it is to protect us from what happened on our golf course from never happening again. So, um, it is specific, but broad enough for some interpretation, but it is not meant to hinder individual property owners. It's more so to protect, um, rampant clearcutting. I've read it. I don't think that there's going to be anything necessary for it to be adjusted for the village, but I've given this out to the village board. I'd like them to look at it and review it, and we make a decision next month if we're gonna adopt this as is. And Joe, you'll take a look at it too, to make sure if there's anything that, hey, Jimmy, that doesn't apply, 'cause that's a town and it's this, versus what we do, um, for the village.
Has the town adopted this?
Yeah, just adopted it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it is town law.
Okay.
It's, and it's local law number one of the year for them, two thousand and twenty-four, but it is local law trees, chapter one thirty-eight.
Okay.
So, yes, all right?
Well...
So I will table that pending council's review and any input from trustees regarding any adjustments that say that they see fit need to be made. I am comfortable as it is written, but I would like your input before we decide to move to pass this. Okay, moving on.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
So you just indicated that you wanted to have this on in June. Now, in June, if you, if you wanna have it...
Well, Jimmy's saying we've gotta have a public hearing and all that.
A notice.
We'd have to put the notice out there. Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I shouldn't say it that way. We're in no rush. This is no, right, we can take our time. I just don't wanna let this be a dangling jumper cable. But you're right, we have to have a public hearing on it.
Okay. So it'll presumably, if the board has no objections, and I, I have no objections, we'll have it...
Yeah.
At the next month's meeting, we'll take action to schedule it for a public hearing.
That's on the agenda for next month?
In July, presumably.
Okay. Keeping in mind that July and August, we have compressed meetings. So our meeting schedule is one meeting, which is the work session and the business meeting combined. So, June is gonna be a busy month.
We could conceivably schedule the public hearing for our June meeting, in our June work session, if we...
Yeah.
What's the date of that meeting?
Doris, date of our June work session? Wait a minute, it should be on, no, it's not on...
The tenth and the seventeenth, right?
Should be the tenth and the seventeenth, 'cause there aren't any holidays in June. So there should be any adjustment to the schedule. But I don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, I think it's the tenth and the seventeenth. It's the second Monday of the month and the third.
Okay. It's all right.
It would be the night. Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
But Joe, in the interim, you'll review this. Doris will put it on the, for us to schedule the public hearing for, um, our June meeting, and I'll, I'll have the board reach out to me with any comments, if they have any. Okay, moving on. Um, I know this is something, Dave, how, how deep did you get in with the three-member board at the work session regarding garbage and sewer fees and the pool credit review? Did you guys discuss it?
We touched it.
Okay.
Yeah, we did.
We touched base, we discussed it a little bit. We're gonna have to set up a meeting very similar to the, uh, building department fee schedule, so we can sit down and, so, we have a lot to address.
The big thing is Dave had some, Dave had some very good data on it, which will help inform us. I already can kinda, I already know where I've sit on it, but Dave's data will help us inform...
But because we're talking about individual, we're talking about individual properties, we should probably do this in executive?
Yes, I, I, the initial meeting that we have, we should, we should do in a closed session.
Okay. So Doris, let's put that on the June work session. There will be a six o'clock executive session for the board, and I'll figure out whatever the appropriate legal languages for that, for the board to consider, um, certain individual property holders and the rate fees that, um, may need to be adjusted, for fairness.
Correct.
Okay. All right, you'll make sure that's on the agenda? Okay. And the last thing on that is, people are saying, well, what is that about the pool fill-up? Um, for years and years and years, we, it's not, it's not part of our code. There's nothing that requires us to do it, but we have, we have waived sewer fees for people that fill up their pool. It's kind of ad hoc and half-hazard. Um, if people come and ask us, we do it. Um, we don't do it for everybody, and we certainly don't do it for those of us who water their lawns and don't have water going through the sewer, but still get charged the sewer fee for whatever the meter says we used in water. So the argument is the board needs to take this under consideration and make a decision. Um, we can't apply, we have to apply this universally. We either do it for everybody or we don't do it for anybody. And I'm of the mind that we don't do it for anybody.
I was the same way, 'cause we're talking about, Dave, less than a dozen?
Well, if you're talking about pools, but you can, people that can make an argument that... So the argument is, right, people that water their lawns, because the wa- when you fill your pool up, it's not going through your sewer. We still charge you a sewer fee for the volume of water that you put in your pool, the same way we do if you water your lawn in July and August. We charge you a sewer fee, because there's really no mechanism to be able to determine that. And we're doing it for some people, not doing it for other people. We need to make it universal, we probably shouldn't do it.
I totally, one hundred percent agree.
Anybody have an issue with that?
But only you do that.
What, water my lawn or, I don't have a pool, I wish I had one?
Bear in mind that the volume consideration for the sewer is always at a, a sub, uh, it, it's discounted twenty-five percent from the volume of water use. So it's sort of like, if you use a thousand gallons of water, the sewer rate is charged against seven-hundred-and-fifty gallons of water, just because it, we understand that not all the water goes through the sewer that is used. So there is already something in there, but then this is an exceptional thing that has been granted occasionally on an ad hoc basis.
And by the way, you have a seasonal pool in your basement.
Yeah, that's true, too. That is true. Okay. Um, so that's on the calendar for six o'clock in front of the work session in June. We'll meet with you then.
One, one of the problems that we've had with that system was that people would call up after the fact.
Yeah.
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 Hey, I filled my pool last week.
Right, right. Or their pool would leak, or some of it would evaporate, and then they would wanna refill it, and then they would want additional credits for the refill. And it just became a thing where it's just, it's, it's unwieldy and it's not evenly applied. And that's the thing, we just wanna be fair. So, okay. Um, next item, sewer manhole repairs. So we're talking about Homeland, where we have the sewage pipes there that are at like a zero-degree pitch, which if you know with wastewater and effluent, um, when it's sitting underneath the manholes, it's not a good thing. So we were gonna contract with a company to do that. Dave, where do we stand on timing to get those curbs? It's in the queue.
It's in the queue.
All right. I, 'cause I've got people over there still asking me, and I, I wanna be able to look them in the face and say, we're gonna get it done.
Well, it, it's in the queue to be done. We've been monitoring and maintaining, we've had no issues over there.
Okay. Not even with like considerable rain?
No, as, well, we don't, the storm, the...
None of it enters into the...
The storm sewers are separate from our...
Okay.
But, uh, the sewer system has to be fairly flat, actually. You don't want it steep, because if it's steep, the water runs solid, stay behind.
Right. But if there's hardly any pitch at all, it just sits down there and ferments?
The water carries it along, but, uh, that, it, it's normal for not to be pitched a lot.
And so what we had agreed to do for the residents and homeowners, only about seven or eight manholes?
There, there's actually only three that need the work done.
The work is called curbing?
Benching.
Benching, I'm sorry. Which is basically something that, that narrows, narrows the channel, which hopefully helps the water flow...
They're making turns.
Got it. Okay. All right, so it's in the queue, you'll keep me apprised of that, so I can keep the board apprised. All right, next item, employee evaluations. Um, deputy mayor Kane advised me that there was a robust conversation about this. Um, the village clerk, um, took it on her own volition, um, something that I was surprised about when I entered the mayor's office on April fifth of two thousand and twenty-one and realized that there is no evaluation system for our employees. So...
Non-union employees.
Non-union employees, that there's no evaluation system. So, we have appointments here, um, but how does anybody know how they're doing? And if they're not doing a good job, um, what is the remediation for that? Do you, you know, is there a policy of counseling? Is there a policy, I mean, coming from federal government jobs, there was always a, a system in place, a mechanism where you evaluated people, and they had an opportunity to improve, or they had a proper, uh, an opportunity to have remediation done, or they got retrained or fired. But we don't have that. So, one of the things Doris and I were looking at, and Doris had come up with, with one, and I think Doris, it was a great place to start. Um, the board is looking at some, some other metrics and some, and some ways maybe to condense some things on there, and we will continue to talk about this. I don't think we'll have anything in place probably before the summer, but going into the fall, I would like to have something in place. So that's the commitment to keep this as a placeholder on the June work session for us to continue to discuss. Did I characterize that? Yeah, okay. All right. Moving along, revised special events application. We're still waiting on some feat, constructive feedback on this and where we're at with this, right?
We discussed it, and then Bill's taken a, a further look at it. The flow of it is not, is not that great. It kinda reads too much like a legal document. And I have to look, because I don't think I sent my final version. So I'm gonna get that to Bill, and we should be able to potentially get it adopted next, next month.
Okay.
If I don't end up with feedback, we're going to...
What I, I sent it to Doris, Doris sent it to you. You made like one change, but there's two, the way it flows is just not easy.
Is this the one that Jonathan worked on with Doris? Okay.
Oh, okay, Jonathan.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright. Maybe we'll, maybe we'll chat. Yeah.
At present, it's formatted and looks like a legal contract that you're entering into, which you are. However, from the standpoint of a general public user who's coming into Village Hall to say, I'd like to reserve a space for a special event, it's possible that we could create a form that drive, is driven more by checkboxes and signatures or initials underneath acknowledgements, rather than, you know, having to fill in the parts of a legal document to have it be, you know, so if we can make it basically the word I would use-
User-friendly?
User-friendly.
I'm gonna take a look and see if I can add to its value in that way, and if I can't, we'll pass it in June as stands.
Okay, alright, good, okay. Next item, and this is more of a placeholder, and just to begin the discussion, last week, the town had their meeting on Tuesday, so last Tuesday, I believe it was, the town supervisor introduced the notion of extending the terms. The town terms for council members are four years, the supervisor, the town clerk, and the receiver of taxes are two years. And what the supervisor wanted to do was extend, and I'm not sure if Mr. Gabas said that it was subject to, I, I think it is subject to referendum, and I think the town was, if they agreed to do this, would make this a ballot initiative, and they were trying to line things up, but there was some discussion and debate. I think most of the board was okay with doing it for the clerk and the receiver of taxes, they weren't sold entirely on doing it for the supervisor, who's a two-year term. I'm looking at introducing it here as, I believe that the top of the ticket, you should always be able to cut the head of the snake off. But I think that it is very disruptive when we have two-year terms for trustees, the town has four-year terms. Now, you're gonna say, yeah, but the town is a town and you're a village. Again, being upstate at the New York Conference of Mayors and talking to village mayors and town supervisors and city mayors, everybody does it differently. Some are two and two, some are two and four, some are four and four, some are three and three, some are three and two. There is no rhyme or reason, it's not a one-size-fits-all thing. But I'm gonna recommend that the board review this, contemplate it, and I think it's something that, and we have to line this up, because it would be something that may require us to put on the ballot to extend, and obviously would not extend anybody's term on the board currently, you would have to run another race, win it, and then earn that, but I think it's something the board should consider. Secondly, term limits, what the town supervisor was doing, and what I discussed with a number of people up at NICOM, was the fact that some municipalities have term limits, I think term limits are good, I truly, truly do. If you had a four-year term, maybe you term limit it to two consecutive terms, you wanted to go three to 12 years, that. If you can't get done what you need to get done in 12 years, I'm sorry, but I think term limits are a good thing, but I think that's something that I would want the board to consider, think about, and then we discuss and debate it in open session, and if there's a, if there's stomach for it, or there's support for it, we could put forth that. The next thing is salaries, I think it is very hard in the village to attract younger folks, other than Lori Beth, who we were blessed to be able to attract to come here, but for the rest of us-
Good catch, good catch.
At our, at our current salary schedule for the mayor and trustees, and again, this is not something that I'm looking to do, I got 11 months left, I'm not looking to do this to this current board, but I think we should consider it, the salaries here really have not changed in a long time. The mayor makes almost as much as the part-time town council members uptown make. You can argue population size, you can argue, well, more departments, you can argue all those things, but the job here, whether you have a municipality of 3,000 or a municipality of 13,000, we have different responsibilities. We have a water system for 16,000 people and supply water, you know, to the town, they have a sewer system, and yes, they handle that piece. But I think it's something that we should consider, what those numbers are, I don't know, but I think we should have that conversation. Is that ever a pleasant conversation to have, when you have taxpayers that are getting hammered, and everything with inflation and everything's going up, and then you say, we wanna vote ourselves a pay raise? No, but if you're going to attract more people to these positions, where you're paying the mayor a salary of $20,000 a year, and you're paying trustees a salary somewhere south of $7,000 a year for the volume of work, you're gonna have a tough time attracting people to do it unless they're like us, well, some of us, retired and on a pension. So, you know, what are you gonna do, are you gonna make it where people are gonna become wealthy? No, but you cannot do this without having another job. There's very few people that can do these jobs without having another full-time job. So if we wanna attract younger people, we wanna attract more people into the town pool, I think it's something we should consider. Those three things, does anybody have any hard and fast nos on that, or feel like these are things that we should consider and spend time on?
Open for discussion.
What's that?
Open for discussion.
Yep, okay. Alright, so moving on to the next thing, update on New York Forward, this is gonna be a quick one, and recreational trails grant program awards, update on New York Forward. Moving on now to the update on, and I say that and I'm being smart, so we were told to be prepared that they were gonna announce the next round of recipients of the New York Forward before we were gonna get acknowledgement on which of our projects were approved. So the, our neighbors and friends in the village of Highland Falls and in the village of Montgomery, I speak to members of their elected boards frequently, cuz they're going through the process that this village board and that town council, it was a solid 18 months' worth of work, and it is literally like having a separate job taken off our plate right now, not to have to be doing that. But it's part of the process, it was a long process, it was tedious, but we're done with it. We have not been informed of which projects are being funded. We're gonna get every penny of the $4.5 million in tax dollars coming back to us for projects. We just do not, as of yet, have any indication, they promised us by the spring, and last time I checked, spring just sprung, so they have a bit of time before they're gonna let us know that. So, that takes me into the RTP grant, Jimmy, what is the recreational trails grant program? That is, when you do these grants, like the New York Forward, they love it, especially when it's state and state, they love it when you layer them, when you put one grant application in, but you also have another grant application in for something that's going to be part of that, they love to see you doing that. And then also to have your own skin in the game, where the village is on the hook to spend some of its fund balance or invest its man-hours and manpower to complete a project. So the village was blessed, this is back on December 13th, when the announcement came out that we received a total of $223,875 for the recreational trails grant program. Jace, I think I sent you that stuff, cuz you got, had the picture, the rendition, and this is related to the Dock Hill Road Connector Trail, that's the connector trail that's going to connect or interconnect Hudson Street, which is our central business district coming down toward the river, Dock Hill Road, and the Donahue Farm property. So this project is probably a million-plus project, the village will have some skin in the game, we're seeking close to $500,000 or somewhere in that neighborhood, don't quote me in the exact number, from New York Forward. What I've been telling them, and Doris, you know that you and I have a teams meeting with New York State on Friday, and I'm gonna have to tell them again, I can't do anything yet, because I don't know if I have to scale the project back and manage my expectations, or we're going to get the blessing from New York Forward. I have a high degree of confidence we're going to, they know that for this village, for the municipal projects, this is one of the pet projects, I pushed hard, I think we will, but we can't, I don't wanna commit to spending one nickel of the recreational trails grant money, cuz it's a quarter of a million dollars, until I know what we're getting from New York Forward, and then I can figure out what the village is gonna kick in, and then manage the expectations on what that's gonna look like. But I'll keep in a loop on that, I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on that. Okay, that's that, lastly, update on the Cornwall Yacht Club lease agreement and proposed public kayak rack. The deputy mayor, I wanna thank him publicly, has been a, an excellent colleague in this, as we've been meeting with members of the yacht club, and I can say we have made substantial strides in working out an agreement regarding Shore Road, working out an agreement on the long-term 100-year lease agreement with them, and some other things. One that would include our dreams, and I say our dreams as a village board, to have a public kayak rack built and installed with donated money and donated materials and donated labor, that would make this something for our residents and visitors to be able to keep a kayak down at the river and access it when they, when they go down there without having to schlepp it on top of their Subaru, cuz everybody with a kayak has a Subaru, let's be serious, schlepp it on their Subaru and get down to the river. Well, I don't, I mean, what, I've seen a couple on Jeeps too, that's true, Joe, I've seen them on Jeeps. So anyway, that's that, and without further ado, I'll move into four-year information. May 14th, 6:00 PM, Fire Commissioners, the meeting is gonna be here in the Village Hall Boardroom, correct, sir? Wow, today is the- Yes, okay. Tonight, obviously, is that, May 21st, 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM, the Board of Education and the School Board's budget vote will take place tomorrow between the hours of 06:00 and 21:00 hours for your military folks, or 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM for your non-military folks at the Cornwall Central Middle School. So make sure you get out and do a Chicago-style vote, early and often, as they say in Tammany Hall. Alright, next item, May 27th, which is next Monday, so a week from today, obviously is the Memorial Day Parade, which is sponsored by the American Legion Post 353 in Cornwall, New York. Village offices and facilities will be closed that day, our folks have the day off in honor of all those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice fighting our nation's wars. And the parade begins at 10 o'clock on Memorial Day, and steps off promptly at 10 o'clock. May 28th, 6:30 PM, the concert series, our bandstand concert series begins. It will start at 6:30, I think it's the music school down here on Hudson Street. The students will be the first band, and that night, myself and the town supervisor will be hosting the Orange County Association of Town Villages and Cities Monthly Meeting of all mayors, supervisors, and other elected officials and appointed officials at Storm King Lounge. That starts at 6 o'clock, then the bandstand kicks off at 6:30, it's gonna be a really nice night to have events like that down in our main square. Okay, next item, June 2nd, River Fest, if you have not been to a River Fest in the village, down at the waterfront, you need to. This is their 20, 26th year doing it, 1998, so it would be, yeah, right? 98, 2008, 2018? They missed two because of COVID, so yeah, but they've been doing this. I think Win Gold and his crew started this back in like 1996, and today's point, there were two that were skipped because of COVID, but yeah, he's- What's that? Yes, that's right, that's right, sure was, Tony Frog. Alright, and then June 14th, our first movies on the Hudson, and it is the movie Hamilton at Donahue Memorial Park, and that is June 14th, and that will begin promptly at dusk.
Fundraiser for the-
Fundraiser- Fundraiser for Fourth of July Committee, and I believe they will be selling adult libations and ice cream, as I, as I understand it. Okay, without further ado, the last opportu, sir?
I just have a question about that, cuz apparently I missed that meeting.
Which meeting?
Because I'm looking at here, it says dinner and a movie, and that's on a Friday night at the park?
I think because they're probably gonna have food trucks, and Mike, Mike was here, he could probably speak more to it, and I can't, cuz Dominic's not here, and Mike's not here, or nobody from the Special Events Committee, but I think they're probably gonna have food trucks, Dave.
Okay, so there's nothing that I have to worry about?
Well, other than, other than policing up all the stuff that will find its way outside of the trash receptacles.
That's kinda my point, it's a Friday evening in the summer.
We can-
Like the park. It's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna cost to have it taken care of, that's all.
We understand, nothing's free, we understand. Alright, okay, we'll, we'll talk, we'll talk a sidebar on that, Dave, me and you. Okay, any other alibis before I go into public comment? Nope, alright, public comment, anybody from the public wish to speak? I'm looking around, seeing none, we'll move on, no public comment tonight at all, we had two public hearings, wow. Alright, let me go around the table with the board, starting with trustee Paleota.
I appreciate the invitation up to NICOM conference, I learned a lot, and I also learned that there's a lot more to learn. But I really appreciated the opportunity, and it was, it was eye-opening, and I did, I learned a whole lot, so thanks a lot.
Trustee Brain?
Similarly, that was my first New York Conference of Mayors annual meeting, and I attended one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven of the events that they threw, threw. Classes were some of them, some of them were investment of officers, basic things like the role of elected officials and other, other officials, required and optional policies, and municipal procurement, which was as confusing before I went in as it is now that we did this.
So true.
And I got to meet a lot of elected officials from towns and villages and cities across the state, it was really illuminating, very fun.
Excellent, alright, trustee Carnwright?
Uh, don't forget to vote on the budget, and I learned a lot in our work session.
Alright, well-played, trustee Carnwright, deputy mayor Kane?
Just one thing, for Memorial Day weekend, if you can, definitely come out and enjoy the parade.
Oh, that's right. And breakfast, right?
No breakfast, not yet.
And I just wanna thank the folks that, I always laugh, but sometimes it hurts my feelings when I think to myself, the village actually does run better when I'm not here. So being away last week, I'd like to thank all the people that stepped up and handled things, and, and that's it. Any alibis from department heads, any alibis from board members?
Or should I adjourn?
That being said-
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, keep in mind, the mics are still live, so be careful.
Thank you all, I gotta book it.
Yep, go ahead, see, I kept it under, I kept it, I kept it under two hours. Yes, sir. Three, wait a minute, wait to-
That's all?
Doris, let me know when this is-
When you're, you have a lot more questions when you're not here in person.
Mics are still live. Otherwise, the mics are ours.
If I swear under my breath, you know.